There we go. Welcome currently retiring stock market special session two of two. How are you?
No, where are you?
Pretty good, pretty good. You had a question about dividends today. I want to cover that with you and also go over some key elements to retire. And then stock market and what you need to do. We've been through all the the basic sessions, mentoring sessions. How are they helping you?
They are tremendously.
Alright, so this one, we're gonna put some numbers down as far as uh. What number, what trade, what numbers are gonna bring you that income? I think we're working on about twenty K.
Right.
That uh. That's too much for you?
No, not at all.
Do you want to take a pic cut?
I don't. That's that's actually a paid increase right there, so.
They say, they say uh. It's better to shoot for the stars, even if you miss, you still hit the moon.
Right.
If your goal, if your goal, if your goal is so low, you know. Then you're gonna, you know, maybe you'll get that goal faster, easier, but then that's, you know. So set your standards high, set your goals high, you know.
Right.
That's what I said.
Understood.
Okay, um. Let's just talk about dividend stocks for a little bit. What was your question on dividend stocks?
What, like, I know you, like, when you're looking at them, you know, you you're looking at the yield and all of that, but. What what makes the? Particularly dividend stock better than the next, you know what I mean? Just say if they have a similar yield and. All that, like, say Coca-Cola and M O, for instance. But they both seen a pay, you know, I don't, I haven't seen where they actually missed any dividend payments or anything like that, so. Well, what would be the major difference other than?
So, okay, so first of all, you want to use our stock market criteria. We have eleven, we have eleven criteria. Your stock selection. And a lot of people don't have that. A lot of people have a different criteria, like they try to like be like. Oh, we're gonna look at both to earnings ratio, you know. I'll do that, you know, we have another criteria, volume, ten year chart. Uh, share price, dividends is one, doesn't have a dividend, it's better to have a dividend than not.
Right.
Stocks with uh, etc. So, um, that is important use criteria. If you could get, you know, seven or eight. That criteria. Then you're looking pretty good nine, you know, ten. I don't know many stocks have all eleven, um, just like that. Sometimes I'll have like between nine and eleven, you know, but. Um. Start with the criteria and then beyond that, there are some things that dividend stocks will will have. For example, you said Coca-Cola, you said Coca-Cola to fill more. So Coca-Cola. The yield is 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 uh, not 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 what Philip Morris, uh, Philip Morris. Actually, it's Altria. The yield is not what Altria is. Altria is like eight and a half percent. What's the Pope here?
Uh, I don't remember right offhand. I looked at so many of them. Uh, I believe it was. I I did it based on the number, like if you say, put a million dollars in there, you get you get basically about sixty grand a year. For offer dividends.
Well, that would indicate six percent, but I don't think Coke six percent. Coke is probably like three percent.
Is it, is it that low? Okay. I I should have, I wrote all that stuff down. I should have. That's actually.
Do you have your computer set up?
Yeah, right here next.
Uh, how long would it take you to pull up Coke?
Let me, let me get in there real quick. Doesn't take too long.
Um, you have it ready. We'll look up a few stocks. Um. So Coca-Cola, uh, one value is that it just broke a record. One hundred years in a stock market.
Right.
And that's something that's, you know, that's not really a criteria, but it's. It 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 goes to show that they know what they're doing. Um, it's not so much that they have a successful product or products. That they can service. Hundred fifty countries around the world profitably. That they have employees working for them. This or stuff does not even end in criteria. But the stock can also maintain profitability and paying dividends. Over the 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 course of lives, you know, over decades, in this case, a century. So even if you have, um. A a good company, a good idea, a good product. You also have to be able to perform in the stock market. Some of these stocks, whatever reason, you know, I don't know, like with different reasons. You have a good company, profits, etc., but it's not, it's just not gonna return the profits to shareholders.
Right.
So the stock's gonna be like, instead of A stock, I would say Coke is an A stock. Both Coke and M O are A stocks. Class eight, but. The other companies are like C or D, because they don't, they don't go up like that over time. If you think of Coca-Cola's tenure chart. It's gonna make you, I guarantee this, you're gonna have made money, same thing with M O on the share price, not just a dividend.
Right.
But the share price. Uh. I can hear my neighbor. I I think I think I got him a neighbor. Uh, don't let it bother you. I'm I'm gonna, I can go inside if it gets too loud. Inside, it's like people grabbing coffee and stuff, stuff, stuff.
Right, right. I got you.
Alright, so uh. Um, Coca-Cola, I think was, when I checked, it was around three percent or less. Yield, which is a yearly return, so you have a million dollars. Um, that yield is gonna be, you know, in dollars, uh, from M O. The yield of eight point five percent, so you're getting eighty five K, eighty five thousand dollars per year. And they pay every quarter, so uh, every quarter.
Coca-Cola is three, three percent. Coca-Cola is a three percent yield.
Three point. Coca-Cola and M O are paying every quarter. So that's every three months, remember, not every four months.
Right.
Three months, and that percentage is broken down into four quarters, so. If it's three percent, it's like point seven five. I'm sorry, it it it's so. It's uh, whatever three percent divided by four is. Um. Point seven five percent per per quarter, something like that. Uh, so. So the value of dividends is you're gonna just own those shares. You can, you can work a job, you can retire, do nothing. You can sleep. I'd say dividends, I can't pay while you sleep.
Right. Okay, now it is eight, eight point three percent.
Uh, M O?
Yes, eight point three percent.
Yeah, give me the, give me the share price for M O and also for Coke.
Alright. Coke is sixty two seventy seven. And M O is forty five seventy four.
So it's gonna cost you. Four thousand five hundred dollars to get a hundred shares of M O and then six thousand two hundred dollars to get a hundred shares of Coke, right? Uh, you don't need that, but I like to do round lots. They call round lot, you know. Just it just because, and then you could also do it like you put ten thousand. Or a hundred thousand like that, that way you have, you know, kind of how much you're getting in the dividend. So a ton, a million dollars a post gonna get you uh, thirty, thirty thousand dollars a year. The deal we were told before to compare them to M O is you should get better share growths.
Right.
But really, you know, you might not. Uh, most dividend stocks focus on dividend. In this case, it's a dividend, that's the main thing. M O also, M O, I saw it dip below uh, into the thirties, you know. So you're losing that share growth, but then it came back. Uh, I would say, write this down, um. Tenure chart needs to maintain share price. Tenure chart. Card. Needs. You maintain share price. Because the strange thing about dividends, you may not know. Um, when they pay off the dividend, they're not giving you money from the the company profit per se.
Right.
They're taking the, they're taking the dividend off of the share price.
Right.
And they're lowering the share price, they're adjusting the share price with a computer, so you you don't even notice it. And sometimes after dividend, the stock will will dip. A few points, but then what happens? Those dividends and shareholders are buying it back up.
Right.
You wouldn't notice it went down. But what happened with a lot of dividend stocks, let's say, the lower caliber, lower caliber, not as good dividend stock. It's gonna start going down like uh. Over the year. And it cannot maintain that, have to do them. And then it starts, if if you lose the A rating, you have like the B rating, C rating, D rating, and eventually. If it can't maintain, some dividend stocks go broke.
Right.
Can't maintain. Um. We talked about the criteria, and one of the criteria is volume. And both dividends, both Coca-Cola and M O have these, have a nice volume. That's.
Yeah.
That's one thing.
They do.
Yeah. So. I think, um. That we have to uh. Hang on one moment. You you wait, you give me one moment.
Oh, yeah, do your thing. Do what you gotta do.
Okay, so um. The 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 dividend stocks move differently. That's a, that's a big thing. Um, a lot of dividend stocks are traded heavily, meaning that, you know. Let's say Coca-Cola traders, you know. Are gonna be buying the the dips and selling peaks. And then also, they're gonna wanna hang in for that dividend.
Right.
They ain't gonna trade the day that dividend's gonna pay, they ain't gonna trade nothing, because they're gonna get that dividend.
Right, right.
M O, so uh. Some, at least some of picking a dividend stock is watching it, see how it tracks, see how it moves. A solid company like Coca-Cola and M O are gonna have like a a a certain characteristic. I would say M O is more volatile. And there's always that. Uh, in the back of my mind as dividend investor. That chance that it kind of might break down, and it may have to cut the dividend. Okay.
Right.
So while the, while these uh. You know, dividend investors are all happy, get eight and a half percent, eighty five K a million, which is great. You don't see that very often. There's a chance that that stock may break down into thirties to twenties, and they're gonna have to cut that dividend in half eventually. So, uh, a good thing. It is, everything has lifespan, you know.
Right, of course.
But Coca-Cola, since it only paid three percent, they're kind of, they're kind of smart in what, where there's less risk. Because three percent not really gonna hurt the share price. It's gonna ease, it's gonna maintain that share price easier. And it can probably get more share growth over time. So those are two, two comparisons you can make right off, right after that.
Okay. Well, Mr. Wilson, so how many dividend stocks do you say is a good number for for one's portfolio?
Well, uh, I I stick with my four ten, so.
Okay.
Have you got your four ten all set up?
I do.
You have a dividend stocks in there?
Uh, I have those two written down as of now, uh, M O.
Why don't you, why don't you start with these two, because there's a lot to learn, just with these two.
Okay.
Uh, I know, I know you heard me talk about W H F, right? White Horse Financial.
Yes.
That pays, that pays like twelve percent.
Right.
But look, doesn't have the volume. Doesn't have the size, it's not, it's kind of small player, doesn't have the size of Coca-Cola or M O.
Right.
So it's different kind of risks, you know. Um. Yeah, pretty much. Questions?
I think that's about it for now on that.
Yeah, stick with uh, your 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 four ten. If you just fit some dividend stocks, M O, um, K, keep the K out and then W H F, White Horse Financial.
Okay.
And then, uh, you know, be willing to cut your weakest position, so if you have. Uh, one of your stocks on the, on the, on the four tens not performing. Then you need to, you know. Find a better stock. Cut out what's in your portfolio. And um. And uh, you're always changing with the market, not every day, but maybe every few months.
Right.
Okay. Um. You remember talking about the uh, five levels of ability?
The five levels of liquidity?
Of abilities, like uh. Novice, agents, addicts.
Oh, okay, yes, yes, yes.
You have that on the recording? You have that saved? Should we go over it? Or you'll get on that?
Yeah, I think that was one of those that. Got wiped out.
Let me uh, let me go over it briefly, um, because. Like the point is that you have to. Have the perspective, when you're, when you're gonna put your job and go into full-time investing, trading. Gotta have the right perspective, so this is, run through it, um. The point of five levels of ability is you have different levels of knowledge, ability, power, strength. And when you apply those, you're gonna get the result, okay?
Alright.
So the first level is novice. Okay, novice is a newcomer. They're learning. They're learning the business. You were, you you uh, you drive a truck?
Yes.
So a novice coming into your field is gonna be like. How I drive this truck without knocking over the stop sign? That I go on over the curb and chipping over when the, when the wind is really high, right?
Right.
So novices will make these mistakes, you know, but but you'll see them come into your workforce, they're making these mistakes, but they're trying, they're learning, okay?
Right.
A novice doesn't know about the five levels of ability. They they don't know that there's a a master. You know. Cocker that knows all the pitfalls. That's just, knows he's steady, he knows his job. He's just kind of survived.
Right.
He's always stressed, you know, anxiety. And hopefully he'll learn his job better. He can become what? An agent. That's level two. An agent is like the backbone of a corporation, the workers, like. A big corporation, a lot of workers, is gonna be thronged, thronged with agents doing their job. Worker bees, you know.
Right.
Uh, entry levels that that are trained. Right? Um, leave alone, they're gonna do their work. If you get a bunch of them, you can have a business. If you ever had it, have employees. You had a lot of agents doing their job, you know, they don't gotta be very ambitious, they don't gotta be special, and they don't gotta be intelligent. They just have to know their job and do their job, and not mess up too much, and they're good. Then they're gonna be able to keep it. But actually, see, some of these novices get fired, you know. They come in, they don't make, they don't make the grade, uh, one month, two months, sorry, now you didn't, you didn't make it, you know, you're out. You're gonna try something, go do something else that maybe, you know. And 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 uh, these levels of ability could be in any fields.
Right.
Tracking in, you know, to be a a customer service, to be a waitress. Waitress dropping a plate, dropping the, dropping the drinks on the customer, you know, how long will you last like that?
Yeah.
Uh, not, uh, getting tired, not able, physically, there's a physical standard as far as. Endurance, you know, gotta have endurance, you know, it, how long do I last if I fall asleep behind that wheel?
Not long. Not long at all. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So. Uh, an agent's gonna expect to get his paycheck, he knows how to do the work, that's important, and he'll get paid. But but he's not gonna get like. He's not gonna make like CEO money, you know, he's gonna make. Basic money, you know, because that's, that's where skills are.
Right.
Uh, i- i- if an agent is uh, stiff. They might, they don't have to do their job, but. They're not necessarily gonna have the other people's job.
Right.
Okay, that's important. Okay, so now we're gonna get into the addict. Addict, I like supervisors, the managers. The skilled professionals at the position. Addict. A D E P T, that's level three. Um. The goal, like, the golden life. Is to retire as an addict. Because you're excellent. When someone says. That's a good doctor. This lawyer is gonna probably, when you're, you got this lawyer, you're good to go, you know.
Right.
This money manager is gonna make money consistently. Talk about it, talk about addicts. Because they they know the job, they know levels of ability. They know how to correct mistakes, they know how to do other people's job. They can manage people successfully. Sometimes you see, you get a promotion, let's say it's a civilizer. But you can't, if you can't manage these, you can't manage these men or women. You're gonna get, you can't be your supervisor, you're gonna get demoted back down to. You see. You have to maintain that higher level, you get promotion. Write, write this down. I heard this while ago, it made it, made an imprint on me. There's one skill. One skill. I'm gonna make sure I got it right. Uh, needed. To advance. One skill needed to advance. Okay, and then another skill. Another different skill. Needed. To maintain. That higher position. There's one skill needed to advance, and there's another different skill needed to maintain that higher position, that's important. So this is my perspective, you know. I'll be any different skills, you know, discipline. Patience, you know. Uh, because your job is gonna be challenging. The job was easy. Everybody would do it, and it would, nobody would, you know, get fired, and probably we wouldn't get paid any money, it could just be so easy.
Right.
People get paid months because people are using our skills, or we're making our own money, business. We're using our own skills to get the result, because we're good, because we have skills, we know what we're doing. We know how to take a dividend stock. We know what stocks to avoid, you know, low volume. Stocks like, well, like this. That are imploding, you know.
Right.
There's other things too, like, if you, if you, if you look at a company, sometimes you'll see like. Like a CEO who's who's like. Like a, like a. Not a, not a good CEO, you know. For lack of a better word, you know, dipshit. Do not have a great company, great idea, make money, but the CEO himself is making mistakes. And he's annoying and distracts, but what's gonna happen? The stocks, he's gonna get the, the shareholder is upset, and the stock's not gonna do well.
Right.
So anyway, you have to, all these things, when you're doing investing, and even in your own business. Okay, uh, next. Any questions so far?
No.
Next level is a champion. Champions are special because of their skill. It's like so high. And you can't really even rate them, they're just masters at their craft. Sometimes you can say, you know, uh. God gifted, you know. Uh, you always words like this, like magic. You know. Um. You know, birthright, you know, threshold. There, there's some people that um, are just so great, you know. Uh, a champion would be like, at a message that I wore a blessing, you know. Not only is he. Doing very well now, it is very old, old years, but he was doing well back when he was twenty, thirty years old. Started out selling bottles of Coca-Cola. Door to door with an old ice pack. And he would make money on selling individual Coca-collas.
Hmm.
He knew he could make money, he was a, uh, a cha, I guess a capitalist, don't call that.
Right.
And then, then he gets, gets his money, he starts buying stocks, his, his, his field is stock, stock market business and trading.
Right.
Uh. Another uh, champion would be like Bill Gates, or software. Uh. Uh, you, do you know sports?
I do.
You uh, see the broad play?
Um, yeah, I've watched him play before, yeah.
Who who's like a champion at basketball?
He's definitely one of them, huh? Him, Shaq, Kobe, Jordan. Shaq, Kobe, Michael Jordan.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, so these are all champions in each other basketball. Not only are they the absolute best, but they're just amazing.
Right.
You you can, you can teach people to be like, you say Jordan, right? More more imagine, right? You can teach people to be like Jordan, he can do a little basketball class. But they really like, could be like Jordan, you know.
Right.
No matter how much you teach them, but it's like God given talent, you know.
Right.
So, um. The top of the top of the top. Uh, are are just gonna be amazing, and let's just say most people aren't gonna ever get there. But they're like, they're like, uh, you know, uh, uh, uh. Uh, 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 I don't wanna say uh, role models, but they're like, um. But yeah, you don't have to have an actor, has a lot of fans, you know. They're just, they're just great, you know, and they're gonna get what champion money, you know.
Yes.
But like, understand, novice, or it, they're not gonna get champion money or active money, because they don't have that.
Right.
So you think about where you are in your actual job. In investing. Where you are to get the money you need to get, you know, you can uh, do more uh, knowledge, more learning, more. More application, like right now, we're mentoring. You can win, uh. Um, we can go to the, to the, to the last step is the last, the last level is the, um. What, remember?
I don't.
Uh. We can, we can say, uh, the mentor.
Mentor?
Mentor. The mentor is like a scholar, the mentor is like a teacher, but like, you said Jordan, right?
Yes.
So, Jordan, um. Also has a, like a coach. You remember Phil Jackson, were you around?
Oh, yeah.
A coach who can teach. Who who who's not necessarily operating at the champion level, maybe he did it one time. But he teaches, he can mentor Michael Jordan to do better.
Right.
Uh, back in the day, there was a. I used to call it chess more than I do now, but there's a guy, Gary Kaspar, who was a chess champion of the world, you know. He'd be a champion, right? Grandmaster, Gary Kaspar. So he plays at a very high level chess, right?
Hmm.
Now he has also a teacher mentor that he trains with. Interestingly, the teacher mentor doesn't play at Kaspar's high level. But being a teacher mentor can teach, can help Kaspar do better.
Right.
So this scholar mentor on level, on the fifth level of ability. Um, may not actually be at the shoe baskets.
Right.
Their, their scholars, their mentors, their teachers. And they're the only ones qualified to keep the candidates.
Right.
This is a position that maybe you you retire into, as you get older. You you teach what you learn.
Right.
Probably what we're doing now.
Right.
I'm teaching you what I learned, and I want you to teach what you've learned, I want you to carry the torch.
Right.
Um. Uh, a successful mentor uh, might be able to move champions to its cause. And that is, could be a great powerful thing.
Right.
A leader. You know, some people say born leader or successful leader, who means not only. A few people, but groups of people.
Alright.
So, looking back at the five levels of ability, you have a perspective. And um. You need to understand that, so basically you get what you get.
Right.
And everything is fair, gonna go that way. You know. Everything is gonna, gonna happen equal, equal to your level of ability.
Right.
Is that good?
Yes, it does.
Alright, question?
No, I'm good on that.
Okay, so um. I wrote down two to three years of consistency. So we talked about paying taxes, uh, I want you to pay taxes, I want to give tax advice, but. A lot of businesses, um, you know, when they start out, they don't, they don't pay taxes, and they've been there half the old age. They just put the money aside, like you said. When you're successful trades, and by the time, do some accounting every month. By the time the year is over, you know how much you're gonna pay.
Right.
Higher, gotta do, don't do your own taxes, higher, gotta do it for you. And um, you wanna have two to three years of consistency. Before you put your job. So you can, you can make your twenty K a month, or at least. Pat, well, well past your current income. In the stock market. For two, three years, and file taxes on that, then you're ready to go.
Okay.
That's, that's the test right there. A lot of trades, what they'll do. Isn't speaking of them, they're not, they're not champions, so they don't even have it, they're like, you're somewhere between novice and agent. You're like. I hit an option, man, I'm gonna quit my job, you know, three months later, they're broke.
Right, yeah. So. See, that's where I wanna be, I don't. The the money that I'm, the money that I have to live on, I don't wanna trade, I don't want that money to be traded, I want that money to sit there, make. The, the money that I'm, the money that I have to live on, I don't wanna trade, I don't want that money to be traded, I want that money to sit there, make me money. And you know what I mean? The money that I, that I'll trade is totally separate and a totally separate account, you know what I mean, so. If I did lose that, I still got my core and still paying my bills, you know what I mean? And that, that's where I wanna be before I even think about quitting the job, you know, so.
This is something that I hear a lot and, um, I, I can't, I can't disagree with this. Put number than five percent. Uh, your total capital. To one trade. So when you're starting out, you know. I don't expect you to have twenty trades or twenty, uh, break up twenty ways. But as you start building your account and start looking to retire and retiring, you need to play. Write yourself great defense, great. Defense. Because you gotta be prepared. Um, to take, to take losses, but do it, you gotta control your loss.
Right.
So when you hear, when you hear the, the, the teaching that use no more than five percent of your capital to anyone trade, what that means is. If you have one train, it gets wiped out. You're good, because it's only five percent.
Right.
And you probably, probably lose all five percent, probably lost half it, whatever.
Right.
Uh, so, you know, if you put all your capital for one trade. But that's why, while you may get a great return on that. You know, they say diversified, you know. If that one trade bombed out. You're done, you know, you're, you're, you just got handled, you lost like, I don't know. Anyway, between fifty to a hundred percent of your whole position. So you have to find that, um, diversify it for protection. And you gotta play great defense and consider that, you know, as you build your channel. And retire, um, you're playing great defense and you're putting no more than, you know, five percent. Or ten percent, but five percent is even better. In one condition that way, you know. It's you're playing great defense, if you, if you have, uh, you know. Even if you have a hundred K starting out, right? And you're putting, you know, let's say five to ten percent, but let's say five percent, that's the teaching. You're putting five K on one trade. But you're telling yourself, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make money in this five K trade. Say like a thousand, five hundred, two thousand, whatever. And then do it again, and do it again, and do it again. Because that's great, let's play great defense, probably. And if you put twenties, thirties, fifties, same five K on, on one trade and it, and it, and you lose. That loss really is so, so hard to come back from, you have to start over.
Right.
So play great defense, but only five percent to any one trade, okay?
Got you.
Um. Corporation. Are you doing everything in personal account, do you have any business accounts or corporate accounts?
I don't know.
Write this down, business account. And then write down corporate account. The big money, the big money does not. Operate in your own personal name, okay?
Right.
There's a lot of reasons, there's a lot of reasons for this, but main, the main reason is. Uh, but it's not professional.
Right.
Because you're doing, now you're doing business now, okay? And, um, it's not just like having a savings account, you know. One, one reason is for protection. Uh, you know, let's say you get lawsuit. Whatever, your, your kid went over, the neighbor went to lawnmower, you know. Now. You got a lawsuit. They can go right into your personal account, take them.
Right.
With a corporation. They can't do that. Your corporate en- is an entity that's separate from you. Okay.
Right.
So they, we can assume they can't go into your corporate, probably. That's why all, you know, big businesses, when you start doing business. Use corporations because they're, they're entities on their, on their own, they have a protection. From lawsuits.
Right.
Uh. Put here in Nevada. The, the events of a Nevada corporation. Is you don't have to disclose, it's, it's called a non-register. Non-disclosure. State. Non-disclosure state. So one thing is doing a court, what, one way is do a corporation in your state currently, okay? But another way is to do in Nevada court where it's very private entity. Um, in a general sense. What, if you, if you operate on a corporation. IRS not gonna bother you because, why? Because you know what you're doing, you're professional. They're probably not gonna get any, any, any tax out of you. Even better than that is to do a non-disclosure state like Nevada. There's a little more paperwork involved, there's, there's some costs, you know, you're, you need to file Nevada, do, do some, do some mailing. But you can, a lot of people use like Nevada courts run their business.
Question, so. You, you, you running, if you running, uh, say a biz through a business account or corporate account. Do you have to put, consider yourself professional? When you say, on your account, on, uh, the accounts? Because I, because I, I had asked about.
I would say, I would say no, and I'll tell you why, just when you say, when you say you're professional. It's like trying to charge you more.
Right, right, well, see, because that's what I was asking, because I, I had asked, called and asked, uh. But this is what, when everything was with TD. Uh, the, the, the person that I spoke with says that, oh, well, if you do that. Then you have to, you have to change your account to, from personal to a professional account. I was like, really? So I was like, okay, no, I'm not, I don't wanna do that then.
They actually did that to me. Um, so I had to pay to get, you're right, you're right, I had to pay, I might just have a personal account. Got IRA. Got a corporate account, another account. So the corporate account, I had to pay to get, uh. On time quotes.
Right.
It's like, it's like twenty, twenty bucks a month, it wasn't a lot, but. So they're trying to get nickel down you, you know.
Right.
But. Uh, in a general sense, uh, don't, you don't have to say anybody a professional. Because that's just, you know, put you in a different bracket. It, 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 it doesn't really matter that much, um, when you tell them, what matters is. The legal entity of a corporation, that's what, either you have it, you don't. Okay.
Okay. Got you.
Another entity is, is a DBA, right, DBA. D B A. Doing business ads. So you can have a business like, uh, Kirwin Investments, okay?
Right.
Doing business ads and very quickly. Uh, by the way, a, a, a corporation might cost you like three thousand dollars. So.
Right.
Uh, a DBA might cost you a couple hundred bucks, because you just have to file, um, a business name. And they pay a couple fees. And I write this down. What?
A DBA is fifteen dollars. Here in Texas. Yeah.
Write this down, call IRS. Get it, call IRS, get it, ask for a DBA number. Once you, um, once you figure out the name of your DBA. Do a business as. Um. You can call IRS on, on the phone that day, they give you a DBA number, which is just a number that's gonna use instead of your social. Oh, by the way. The corporation. Instead of using their social, it's only under the corporate number. Add it down. Instead of using their social, use a corporate number for your corporation.
I, I have one actually already, but the one that I got was, was some completely different. But when I talked to them again, they told me that you only get one, so. I would have to use that same number, but I guess I maybe have to get a different DBA. For that number.
It really isn't like you can't use the old one?
I can. It is just, yeah, it, it's just that one I had initially got that one for trucking. You know what I mean, as far as only trucks and stuff like that. But I'm not using it for that, so.
Um, even if it says trucking, I have, I have one, uh. We just land for. So even if it says trucking, you can still use it to trade stock. Because a trucking company needs, needs investments and trade, and trade.
This is true.
Yeah, so and then I try to check, check you on that.
Okay.
Okay, um, write this down, um. E, E, I, N number. Number. Yeah, yeah. That's a number that I also give you, uh, for your DBA, specifically your DBA. And, um, the value is that once you have a DBA. For one thing, you're gonna get tax benefits, like. You can, like, we talked about having employees.
Mm-hmm.
So you can, um. You can, uh, hire employees and then that's a tax write-off, so. Uh, you know, let's say have, have accountants, uh. Do, do some helping do pay work, you can have like a secretary. You know. You can even like go to, you know, you can do. What, you can go to the college, to a local college. Hire a couple, just, uh, just put a note, you know, hiring a part-time work to, uh, search research stocks. Right, you can have, you can have, uh. Uh, a few people working to find stocks for you with the criteria that you like, just go through the list of stocks online. And they're gonna give you stocks to say, pay high dividend or have a good cover call. You know, I, you know what, what I mean when I say, if a stock had a good cover call.
Right.
High return monthly on the cover call, like, for instance, say for Tesla, Tesla's hard to beat. It's like five point five percent return, still.
Right.
Um, so anyways, wha- whatever your business is, your project that needs some help, even just advertising. Pass the flyers, you know, whatever the business is. And then these are, these are costs. That you have to write off, and if, if you deliver any in your personal name, you don't have a DBA or corporation or nothing. I rest you that I just gotta know what he's doing, we're gonna give them audit.
Mm-hmm, right.
So DBA, professional, corporate, corporation, more professional. Uh, don't, don't operate on your own personal name, on your own personal name, you can avoid that. Questions?
I get all that switched around, so like I say, I, I already got the DBA and EIN, so. Is it, like I say, was for initially for trucking, but. And I tried to get another one, they told me, oh, you don't get another one, this is, that's the only one you get, you have to use that, so.
You, if you have a paperwork, you can call, um. Swab, now Swab. And open up a stock market account under that name. Okay?
Okay.
Just send in the paperwork you have. And you, now you have a business account.
Okay.
We talked about getting checked and checkered, right?
Right.
Check was gonna have, give you that flexibility to pay your bills. Which is gonna be key, key in retiring the stock market. You're gonna pay your bills with checks online or physical checks. You just, you give them a routing number and a, a kind of number, then you pay all your bills that way. And, uh, it's nice and efficient. You're not transferring money every time, it's, it's kinda like. That takes one more time, more money, when I call the phone, I paid my, um, right out, uh, earlier today. I paid my, uh, internet bill. I thought with a check or with a phone online. And then it was not a physical check, I just gave them the number, they already have it, actually saved actually there. When I called them, the bill's paid and I don't have to transfer it, I don't have to wait.
Right.
And I know it'll, it'll hit my account, you still have to have accounting. Still have to know what, you know, about checkbook. But, uh, when you pay, it's automatically paid instantly, and it won't even come out of my account, so for several days. For several days I'm trading that money, remember you have margins, all the checks are in the clear, as long as your margins are maxed out.
Right.
Okay. What?
I do have another question for you.
Yes, yes.
I was, I was speaking with a guy the other day and he told me like, okay, like what's your dividends? Say you buy a million dollars of say, just any size, just Coca-Cola. And then you can use your margin and buy another million dollars of Coca-Cola. So now you're getting double the dividend, uh, even though you only have a million dollars. Would, would you recommend doing that?
Uh, yes and no, okay, so. Um, yes, you can, you can. Uh, basically with cash, buy a million dollars Coca-Cola. And then with margin, buy it ten million dollars Coca-Cola, but here's the thing. On that margin, see how much they're charging you per year, there's interest on the margin. Um, I think Swab is charging like eight percent.
Really, right.
Yeah, so you eight percent on, on, um, a year. On a million dollars, that's eighty K that is spent in, uh, interest, so it adds up. If you get three percent back on Coca-Cola, you're only paying five percent interest, so you still have a loss. But if you have a loss. Maybe the share, here's, here's, here's the, the risk, well, here's the, the investment. You, you're paying eight percent interest on that million dollars, it's eighty K, but you're getting three percent back on dividend. So now you're down to fifty K. But if, if that five percent charge now that's left. If the stock goes up ten percent from sixty-two to sixty-eight, okay?
Right.
Now you, you cleared off that five percent interest and you made five percent profit.
Right.
Follow me.
Right.
So what about the risky? Uh, first of all. I wouldn't go a hundred percent margin because that's, that's, that's a lot. I would go like twenty, thirty, thirty percent. But, um, because for other reasons, because if coke goes down, now you're losing twice fast, right? But as far as making money, you can borrow money, like you can get a bank loan too, you can, you can mortgage your house, you know. So just look, look at what is possible.
Right.
Uh, uh, call Swab and ask how much that, that interest is possibly concerned, probably a broker. But let me tell you this. If you did, um, uh, borrow by the margin. And even if you pay eight percent. Uh, let, can we look up, can we look up Tesla right now?
Yep.
Uh, it's June, so we'll look up July, okay? Give me the July monthly. Tesla, give me the, the stock, the stock price, please. And then we're gonna do the, the, the right of cover call.
Uh, stock price is one eighty-three oh one?
One eighty-three oh one. Now we only provide to one eighty-five, we're not gonna do that. What about the sweet spot, which gives a share growth? So let's look at, um, one ninety. How much does that pay? For next month, third week, July.
Uh, nineteen. The one ninety pay.
What?
Six ninety.
Six ninety by what?
One, uh, seven oh five.
Seven oh five, so let's just say seven dollars, plus nine. That's seven hundred dollars, and look at this. The, the, the distance between the one eighty-three and the one ninety is seven points of share growth. We get seven more point, seven more, more points of share growth. Right, the one ninety, because we, we agreed to sell our stock at what, one ninety by next month. And for that, we're gonna get six ninety. By seven oh five, which is to say seven dollars close enough, seven hundred dollar investment. We put eighteen thousand, three hundred dollars down, okay? Buy a hundred shares of Tesla right now at the market. Write the cover call for next month, July, one ninety strike. Just seven hundred dollars, and let's do the math, divide seven hundred by eighteen, eighteen thousand three hundred. What's the return on investment, ROI? You can also do seven point oh divided by, uh, eighteen point three. Same difference. I'm sorry, sorry, one eighty-three. Well, you have the seven hundred divided by eighteen thousand three hundred. It's around five percent.
Uh, that's, uh, point zero three eight. Three point eight, yes.
Are you sure?
Seventeen, seven, seven hundred divided by eighteen, three hundred? Eighteen thousand, three hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's three point eight.
Okay, so a little lower than that, three point eight, no worries. We can also write to one eighty-five, is there, is there, is there, uh, uh, tell me the strikes between one eighty to one ninety?
Uh, it's one eighty, one eighty-five and one ninety, you're going in five.
Okay, let's do this, but this is, see. You can always improve, right, remember, there's one skill to advance, one skill to maintain that, right? So we're gonna do, okay, so we're gonna do two hundred shares of Tesla, if you can do that, okay? One, we're gonna write the one ninety strike, we put it for seven turn. And one, we're gonna write the one eighty-five, okay, what is one eighty-five pay?
Uh, eight ninety-five by nine oh five.
Eight ninety-five. By nine oh five, let's just say nine dollars, close enough.
Right.
So the, divide nine. Divided by one eighty-three. What's the return on that?
Oh, that's four point nine.
Huh?
Four point nine.
Four point nine, little better, okay? So. One, one, uh.[1771.71] Cover call, we can write the one eighty five. Once the recall right to one ninety, we'll get the best of both worlds, we can sub share growth, and we get premium, okay? So add, add this up, add three point eight plus four point nine, when you get. Eight point seven? And then divide that by two.
Divide it by two. So that's six point two five?
No, no, three point eight, which is what we get, return on the first cover call, the one ninety.
Right about.
And then a four point nine.
Four point three.
Four point three, so average of four point three percent return. So decent return, Tesla's still paying, I said five, that's a little high, but you know, the, these numbers will change, right?
Oh, yeah.
But four point three percent for one month, okay, we're talking about paying interest on margin, okay? Eight percent a year, even if it's ten percent a year, I'm getting four percent per month, if I do ten cover calls, remember, ten cover calls. At four point three percent return, what is the yearly return?
You say?
Per month times ten cover calls is how much?
Say that again.
Four point three percent returns per month on Tesla.
Okay.
Times ten cover calls a year, how much is the return? A year?
Three times two.
Four point three percent per month times ten.
Um, forty, I'll come over forty three.
Yes.
That'll be forty three percent for the year.
Forty percent return, that's your return for, that's your business, your business right here.
I give.
Now, you can actually get two more cover calls in the twelve months, but I always. This is doable, it's not hard.
Right.
You can mess up, listen, Kevin, you can mess this up and still do it, okay? So I just go ten, this is ten cover calls a year, just do the best ten cover calls you can do.
Right.
So instead trying to get fifty percent, we're at forty percent return, now if you get forty percent return on, on the cover calls. Who would wanna pay eight percent or ten percent interest on the margin, you know me?
Yeah, no question.
That, that's how you, that's how you take care of that, I'm, I'm gonna show you one more, one more thing. Uh, this is a little more, little, little different. So let's do this, okay? So we, we talked about monthly cover calls, that's, that's like your bread and butter, you know, and I say that cover calls is. Your, give away the upside of your stock, that you're bringing in a determined income every month, and you can pay your bills to that money, okay?
Right.
In this case, four percent, Tesla, four point three, three point eight, four point nine. You don't really gotta trade, you don't really gotta buy the dip and sell the peak, which is difficult, you're just writing the cover card a month. So what, it's doable, it's consistent, it's easier, those people that buy your option. You can always sell your option to the market, right? Those people that buy your option, so you have, you have the share, you create the option. You sell the option or, or write the option, those people buy the option, they're taking the risk because. About two percent, what's gonna happen to that option, if Tesla doesn't, stays at one eighty three, and they're holding a one ninety call. And what happens if the, the share price stays the same by next month, what happens to that option?
Spa's working.
Exactly, and you made your money, you made your seven hundred dollars, or eight hundred dollars, or nine hundred dollars. And that person bought a car option, got what, they cut loose there.
Yeah.
Uh, they're only, they're only gonna make the money if Tesla shoots up to two hundred, two twenty, it may do that.
Right.
Which case, you still get paid, but they may get paid more, that's all, they may get paid a lot. You can actually buy an option for a dollar, and that option, like a ten dollars, they may, they get paid ten times. But now they're doing these risky trades, and you're doing what, write this down, that is actually safe trades. Okay? Safe trades, why could you have, you know, you're retiring, you're not trying to, trying to uh, risk everything.
Right.
Control, write this down, control risk, control. Risk. Now, uh, question on that.
I completely understand that.
Now, let's look at, let's go all the way, all like, while I have Mary Pat, okay? Go to Tesla, December twenty sixth. Call option, we're gonna write, we're gonna write the long term cover call, okay?
December twenty sixth, okay?
Two thousand, December two thousand twenty six, as far as out option.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
Uh, we're gonna do, so now if we're in. And, and if we're at one eighty three, when I, when I find the sweet spot, okay? So tell, how much is it for the two hundred? Call to December the Friday.
The two hundred is uh, sixty one dollars, sixty one, sixty five.
That's six thousand, that's buying a hundred shares at for eighteen thousand, getting six thousand back immediately.
Right.
Uh, that's sixty, let's look at the two forty, that's a two forty pin.
Forty is. Forty nine thirty five by fifty thirty.
Okay, let's go back, let's go back to two, two thirty, what's the two thirty pin?
Two thirty is. Fifty one ninety five by sixty, by fifty two sixty five.
Fifty one, okay, that's gonna be the back to sweet spot, fifty one by fifty two. Let's say fifty one, okay? So you buy Tesla here at one eighty three, eighteen thousand dollars, so you, you go, you go all the way out. How many passes, like a recall, write the two thirty strike, which gives you how much share growth, count between one eighty three to two hundred is seventeen points. And two hundred to two thirty is forty seven points. Forty seven points of share growth, which means that you're gonna actually make that money as a stock goes up. Since we're selling the upside, we, we, we cap ourselves at two thirty, we can only get paid to two thirty, in this case, if it goes out that far. Where they get uh, four thousand seven hundred dollars on our shares. And where they get what, fifty one hundred on the premium, you told me fifty one by fifty two. Fifty one hundred on premium, which is about ten grand, okay?
Right.
So it's like a ten grand back, put eighteen thousand in, get a ten grand back. But that's only if the shares go up, the shares uh, don't go up, it may, they may not. You're getting five grand back in your hand, fifty one hundred, the moment you press right cover call, minus one cover call. So if you're getting, you're getting eighteen, eighteen thousand three hundred, you're getting back five thousand one hundred, give me the return on investment on that.
I don't know why I did uh.
Fifty one hundred divided by eighteen thousand three hundred.
Uh, that's a two point seven eight percent.
Uh, you shouldn't have any points, you shouldn't have any points, there should be a point something.
It is point two seven eight.
Twenty seven.
I didn't move my death mobile, no, I got you.
Twenty seven point eight percent return. Now, who would want to buy Tesla here at eighteen, one eighty three, so eighteen thousand three hundred. And then guess, fifty one hundred back right away, and a return of twenty seven percent, point eight percent. I think it's like a nine hundred day trade or eleven hundred, so yeah, you gotta hold it for a couple of years, but. Uh, meanwhile, you get cash in hand, fifty one hundred, you got a long term investment on the Tesla, to get another forty seven hundred. But what you do, you take that fifty one hundred, and you, what you do, you get buy more shares and write another cover call.
Right.
Now, with that fifty one hundred, uh, that's your money, so there's no interest, there's no cost.
Right.
Okay, there's no, there's no uh, charge on that money, so with fifty one hundred, you can buy what, about her shares of Morris? Uh, sorry, Altria, you can almost buy Coke.
Right.
Coke is sixty two, you can buy how much, how much pounds here can we buy? With fifty one hundred?
What is twenty, so you can buy at least, yeah, at least two hundred shares right now.
Well, let's do two, look, we buy, we buy the Tesla, we get the money back, we put that in pounds here, get two hundred shares, give you a pound share price.
Yeah, let's look at it. Yeah, twenty three eighty two.
Twenty three eighty two. Uh, so I wanna spend, we spend, take that fifty one hundred, um, and we'll spend forty, about forty eight hundred.
Four, forty seven sixty four.
Forty seven sixty four, close enough, hey, look, we got two hundred, two hundred uh, thirty six, six bucks. Take your wife out to dinner.
Right.
And you still do two hundred shares of pound here, let's do pound here, okay? We're all the way out to December, to, to the Friday's that cover call, whatever you have, January, it might be January or June.
Yes, six, three, twenty six.
December, they go December also? Okay, so let's, let's say, let's look at maybe it's the thirty cover policy, thirty, thirty, total campaign.
Five twenty five by six eighty five.
Five twenty five. Um, is there a twenty nine?
No, it's uh, uh, twenty seven, a twenty seven and a twenty five have been twenty two.
Let's do the thirty, cause I wanna get, I wanna get uh, eight points of share growth. So I'll write to thirty, I'll, I'll take the five twenty five, okay? What, what's the, what's the bid and ask, five twenty five by?
Six eighty five.
Six eighty five, okay, so that's a big spread, okay? What, what you wanna do in that case, put a limit order for six dollar, because why? Cause when there's a big spread like that, what happens, someone will, will buy a call, and they have to pay six eighty five. And when they sell call, they have to get paid only five twenty five, because is it five twenty five?
Uh, five twenty five, yes, no, no, five, no, no, thirty five is a, a bit, a bit tighter, fourteen by four thirty. Which is only twenty cents.
So that's, that might be a better deal, but what is somebody, the, the thirty, because I'm gonna show you something. A limit order, like the limit. Order at six dollars, right in between the bid and the ask.
Right.
What happened is that, that specialist that runs pound here, or if you're doing Tesla. Uh, it's gonna look at that, then order saying, well, maybe I could sell uh, one call for six. Because um, somebody might um, not be able to pay the market, market share.
Right.
And they'll take your order and sell it to the next option buyer that um, that wants to buy that call. And now you're gonna get six hundred dollars back, okay?
Right.
And you, we doing two contracts, how much money is that?
Uh, two, that's twelve.
Ten dollars, and then two contracts is what?
Yeah, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred dollars. They'll make the money, we'll make the money regardless, girl.
Yes, sir.
Twelve hundred dollars cash, yeah.
Right.
Take you out to dinner, honey, we do it every day this week.
Yes, sir.
Now we got a, a, a best one for Tesla, making forty seven hundred share growth, fifty one hundred premium, now we got an investment paid for. By pound here, making twelve hundred dollars, and we got some share growth, um. I tell seven point one eight, seven four one in place of share growth, up to thirty, between twenty three and thirty.
Right.
Uh, no, 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 six point one eight, I did it wrong, six point one eight, same, same difference. And just keep going.
Yes. Do you write, you write the cover call, you, you able to use that money right then and say buy the, buy those shares?
Right away, write this down, look at your cash available. Before you write the cover call, it'll say, let's say it's six hundred dollars, okay? And they can also look at the uh, your stock, your stock market buying power, BP buying power. They say that might be, you know, two thousand, okay, when we write the cover call, that'll increase. By that cover call per se, uh, amount. So yes, you get the money right away, but I want you to check yourself, when you're steaming. Your, your, your account balance will increase on the whole, because you have a minus one obligation.
Right.
That minus one obligation is an option that will time decay.
Right.
We're trading time to take, but, but we're not gonna wait two years. Uh, we're gonna use that cash available, that was just positive, even though the, even though the uh. Overall account value doesn't go up that moment, the cash available, because you're getting cash on that cover call, so yes. You can use that money right away.
Okay.
I think I said it last session, though, while uh, these millionaires know how to get life insurance, say million dollars. And after so many payments, they can borrow their life insurance.
Right, right.
Tax free.
Right.
Uh, with these cover calls, you're making investments, and you, you're getting money back in your investment, you're, you're trading the future. Either with the upside, to those, you're selling the upside of your shares, so those option buyer, who take the bigger risk. We're getting determined money, whether it's one month, or six months, or two years, or paying our bills.
Right.
Now, can you do this with, can you do this kind of trade with a truck?
No.
And it's really, look, as an employee, you're trying to get the most money out of you, in, in, in a sense, pay you the least, in a sense.
Right.
Like, I know you get raises, you, you get respect from your boss, you know? He's gonna be appreciative of you, he might give you like a little donut or something, then come into the workplace. He might give you a, uh, I used to get a present from my boss when I was working, uh, on Christmas. But, all the work you do for them, you're making a corporation money, you're basically an agent, you know, maybe an ad app. But when you do your own business, here's the thing, all the risk is on you, these trades don't work out. There's a bird gonna fly in, you're like, show me my money.
Right.
Uh, you, there's no money.
They, 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 they give us a printout of how much our truck make per year, but last year. My, my truck grossed four hundred and sixty three thousand. I didn't get close to that.
Now we're gonna make that your money, that's gonna be your money.
Right.
Hey, hey, twenty K a month, times twelve is two hundred forty K, hey? See, this is, you know what? You, you do deserve that money, this is kind of like, almost like the same amount of money, I mean. Give them a profit, cause you know, they bought the truck, they deserve a profit, right? But two forty K is like right in there, so you, that's how much you, that's how much you're worth.
Right.
The thing about.
Right.
Questions?
Uh. I guess, I guess I'm good for now.
Um, I wanted to just touch on one last thing that will close, uh. You remember the cash cow position, what is that?
Cause when you own, when you own shares and you write enough cover calls to fully pay the shares off, and then you're still writing cover calls, making money.
And you get to the position where you can't really leave on paper.
Right.
If you're making four point three percent with Tesla monthly, four point three percent with Tesla monthly. How many months will it take to get a hundred percent to pay for a hundred percent of your investment?
Hmm.
Can we do the math on that?
I'll do it right now.
You, the, the math is a hundred divided by four point three, that's what it is.
Right. So twenty three.
Twenty three months, you'll, you'll get enough cover call money to pay for your share, eighteen thousand three hundred. And basically, your, your investment's paid for. And you can still do cover calls every month.
Right.
And that eighteen thousand investment, the shares go down. That's okay, because you already got your money back, plus you're still making money cash cow.
Right.
So shares will go to zero, and you still made a profit.
Right.
Now, I don't think Tesla's ever gonna zero, someone, someone's buying far, you know, but then, you know, you look at Coke, you look at Altria, you look. Look at uh, the stocks, health here, you know, do some diversification, don't put your, it's one basket. Uh, you make the best trade you can do, you, you, you make safe trades. Uh, you stick with your quartet, you cut your lowest position, you cut your weakest position. I wanna mention for you of Nvidia, N B T A.
Yes.
And S S M C I, which is Super Micro Computer. They both are AI companies.
Right.
I think those two are going up, they're gonna be hot, S M C I and Nvidia, and just, just to. Just to check, let's, let's just do Nvidia and then we'll close out, um, where's Nvidia paying for next month? And what's the price, I know it went down on Friday.
Yeah, it went down Thursday and Friday, yeah, I said uh, one twenty six fifty seven right now.
One twenty six fifty seven, so what, what's, what's our call? So what, what's, what's our call? Do we have a one thirty, one thirty three, one thirty two? What do we have in July?
July.
One month down.
I probably would write, uh, if you're asking me, I probably would write. Probably the one thirty five.
Tell me the strikes below, below one thirty five.
Uh, they, they're moving in dollar increments, so one thirty five, one thirty four, one thirty three, one thirty two, one thirty.
In this case, let's transition to the sweet spot. So how much is a, is a one thirty three paying?
The one thirty three is paying. Oh, is that right? Because the one thirty three is paying, showing to pay four oh five by five twenty five.
How much is the one thirty paying?
The one thirty is paying six fifteen by five fifty.
One thirty one.
The one thirty one is five ten by six twenty.
Let's do that, five ten.
Before we move along, okay, so. The one thirty three is showing four oh five by five twenty five, but the one thirty five is showing four thirty five by five, by four sixty.
Okay, that's called, uh, a, a balance.
Okay.
That's probably, uh, that might be a computer error, but it might actually be that, the, the higher options pay more. In that case, write the higher option, right?
Right.
Now, I would check back on Monday to see if those prices have changed, because sometimes your markets close, the after price will get kind of goofy. And when it starts market trading again, it goes back, but obviously, you know, you're not supposed to get more for the higher one, but if it's still there, yeah, you can write it.
Right.
But for the one thirty one, I'm trying to get the sweet spot, and if it's five ten by six twenty. Uh, we can do a limit order right in the middle, let's just do five, six, five sixty. Write down five sixty, limit. And, and if you do a limit order, and it doesn't take within twenty minutes. Just like adjusted, just put it lower and lower until it takes, I don't want you to like lose time, I want you to lose a day, two days, three days. Have your limit order, it doesn't ever take, and then meanwhile, stock's picking up, and you, you miss a big loop.
Right.
So limit order only, the idea that, oh, you're only supposed to wait maybe ten or twenty minutes or thirty minutes. If it doesn't take, just, just lower it until it goes to market. I think you can get five sixty here, and if you count between one twenty six fifty to one thirty one, that's four, that's about five. Point, about five points of share growth, so sweet spot, share growth and premium is the same, that's the sweet spot, right? So now divide five sixty, divided by one twenty six fifty seven. What's the return on investment?
That's a. Oh, four point four.
Four point four percent. Hey, look, it's equal to our Tesla.
Yeah.
And we have, we actually have more share growth on the video. So, um, you get four percent return a month on this stock. Uh, you know, equal to Tesla, twenty three, probably twenty two, within two years, cash cow.
Yes.
Safe, easy case.
Yes.
You ready?
I am ready.
When you're ready for your next, uh, just keep me posted, I'll be here, you can text me. Congratulations, you're on your way, Kevin.
Thanks, sir.
I think, uh, we did good today. I'm gonna send you that recording, rewrite your notes.
Always, always write my notes, those notes are the life. Give me something to look back.
I'm editing recording, but I just want to thank you. And, uh, proud of you, and I encourage you to, you know, go on great heights.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I appreciate it, hey, a lot of the knowledge, and it came from you, so I really appreciate it. Uh, a lot of listening to you and studying, reading, studying some more, you know? It, it has gotten me to the point where I am now, so I just look forward to keep learning and keep growing, keep growing my accounts also, so. I'm working on it.
Amen. You're very welcome. Stay attached.
Will do. Thanks, sir.